Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome back to this January 11th meeting of the City Council. The time is 7:30, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which it is just a rock.
And will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Bessassi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Soneika.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel, as well as on our other media outlets. The first order of business tonight is to approve minutes from a previous meeting. There are two sets of minutes to approve. The first set is from December 14th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
Some.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and those minutes are approved. This brings us to the second set of minutes, which is for December 21st, 2021 City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes? Some. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Reyes for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Moving along here for the mayor's report, not much to mention in the early days of this new year, but as I mentioned at the start of the meeting, I do want to welcome everybody back, and I hope that your holidays were pleasant, healthy, and enjoyable for everyone. We're 11 days into this new year and seven days into our city manager Savo's role as city manager. And with that, I'd like to welcome you to our first city council meeting of the year and your first meeting as city manager. We look forward to working with you and your leadership as city manager for the city of Rolling Meadows, so welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And with that, are there any ward reports this evening? Alderman Bud Matts, then O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At my last ward report, I talked to about a resident who had an issue with the fire station on Plum Grove Road and how it still said Fire Department, and thank you to the Fire Department. The very next day, somebody went and took the sign down, and the same resident called me and said, "Thank you very much," so she was very appreciative. So I just wanted to thank the Fire Department or Public Works, whoever did it, for their quick response. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts. Alderman O'Brien?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'll try and be as brief as possible. The update from our January 3rd Economic Development Committee meeting. We did welcome two new members that were appointed by Mayor Gallo and approved by the council in late 2021, Janine Molinelli and Heather Larson. So we are at the full nine members for Economic Development Committee. Martha provided a great foundation overview and education to help EDC members have a better understanding of Cook County Class 6B property tax incentives, as we had requested, and the chief helped us make sure that happened. We did review 2022 goals again, which, just in recap, are assist existing businesses, attract new businesses, and aesthetics. What we did this time is we did assign or people self-anonym themselves to be a primary person and lead, so we can make sure every meeting, we've got updates coming, if they do some brainstorming outside. Obviously, we kept it to only two members per topic because of Open Meetings Act. And then what we asked to do is since we will meet again in February prior to our February committee, the whole meeting, is that the person that was offered their assistance to take primary on one of the goals is have some bullet points that we can discuss as EDC at our meeting in February, and then bring to council, ideally at our committee, the whole meeting, to get support, endorsement, saying, "Hey, no, guys, you guys are going the wrong way on this goal. Let's focus our time here," so we could have clear goals to work on for the remainder of the year. So we are preparing to have that for the February call for full council review if the agenda permits. Very positive news, no details to be shared as of yet, but there was a party that's interested in the Great American Bagel location, Agglutik location, and as more details become available, they will be shared. And then also, there was a very positive meeting with the owners of the former Taco Bell at Kirchhoff and Meadows. So there is some dialogue that is taking place there, which is a nice change from how it's been in the past. And then last but not least, staff is obviously working with the mayor and others for the State of the City event, is in the very early planning stages, and more details to come on that over the coming weeks and months. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Soneika, did you have ward report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a resident that reached out regarding the snow removal. I know in the past couple of days, we've had a significant amount of weather in terms of ice, black ice, and significant snowfall. So we did talk to Public Works regarding the snow removal. I know that we had some complaints as far as how the snow was accumulated in certain subdivisions, including the Colleen Court area. That should be fixed at this point, and it sounds like Public Works did take that feedback and should be improved going forward with the new crew, so we appreciate everyone's patience on that. If you have any additional issues with snow removal, please reach out to me and feel free to reach out directly to Public Works as well on the city website. They do take all that feedback into consideration, and they do speak with supervisors and their staff to ensure that everyone is able to safely leave their homes during inclement weather, since that's just the reality for us in the city of Rolling Meadows. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Alderman Beniziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I did get a couple of residents reach out on Old New Wilkie Road area in regards to some parking issues with the COVID testing sites in the Central Road subway corridor right there. And so I did talk to Chief Nowacki this evening, and so they will be monitoring that with the increased traffic at that location and on Old New Wilkie Road right there, and just having some extra enforcement there and monitoring that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Any other ward reports this evening? Okay, with no further ward reports, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be opening the floor to the public for 20 minutes. I understand there is one signature on the sign-in sheet. However, the individual doesn't necessarily need to speak, but is available for any questions for line items C under pending items. So just keep that in your minds in case we need to make a motion to deviate and open the floor if there are questions for item C under pending items. So with that and pending items, we'll get into the first line item, which is line item A, ordinance number 22-01. It's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Bud Matts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious as to if we're extending the state of emergency, why we're not, given the current state of positivity and the fact that Northwestern Hospital has stopped having elective surgeries because they're so full of COVID patients. Why are we still meeting in person? Why don't we have an option for remote meetings at this point?
Is that a question for now, or are you just...
There's a question, yeah. I guess I'm trying to figure out if we're really having a state of emergency or not.
Well, I can only equate it at this time, and this is not for discussion at this time, but in our presence here in city council, we have made efforts to keep it safe for all those attending from the council and staff side. Public is not open in here. If I look at situations like my wife as a teacher, for example, they're far more crowded than our ability to physically distance. Here, we have the ultraviolet light system in our HVAC system. We're taking precautions. We've had this office cleaned in advance of our arrival, and if we notice that it becomes detrimental or potentially damaging to our health and welfare, then we can take measures to go back to remote meetings. But hosting a hybrid meeting is fraught with nothing but difficulty, and so in that event, it would either be in-person, as it was two weeks ago and going forward, or it'll be virtual in its entirety. And so right now, at this time, we'll monitor it and see if there's any health concerns and true risk to us here, but until then, we will push on as normal. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item B, ordinance number 22-02, and it's to authorize the approval of a final plat of subdivision of Calabrese subdivision for the properties at 2321 Brockway in Palatine, Illinois, and 4940 Emerson Avenue of Palatine, Illinois. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Moving on to line item C, ordinance number 22-03, to grant approval of a special use authorizing a major change to the V-Land planned development authorized by ordinance 03-52 and other relief necessary to allow for modifications of the existing wall signage for Huntington Bank at 1415 Algonquin Road. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano for the second. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to the next item on the agenda, which are the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of three items. Those items are D through F. Does any alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for ordinances? Okay, seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the three ordinances in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Soneika for the first. Thank you, Alderman Beniziano for the second. I'll get you next time, Alderman O'Brien. This brings us to line item D, ordinance number 22-00, approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Line item E, ordinance number 22-00, at this time is to amend pay ranges for seasonal and intern positions for the city of Rolling Meadows. And the third item, line item F, ordinance number 22-00, at this time is to designate representatives to the Northwest Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Agency for the city of Rolling Meadows. The question is, shall the three ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will move forward for second reading. This brings us to new business, and it is for line item G, a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for January 11th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first. Is there a second?
Some.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika for the second. Is there any discussion for the bills on warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us to the next item on the agenda, which are the consent ordinances in for...
Resolutions.
I'm sorry?
Resolutions.
Consent resolutions. My bad. You know what I'm thinking of already? That it consists of 13 items, basically half the alphabet, and that's where my mind was, and I wasn't reading that it's consent resolutions. But while we're on the subject of the 13 items, those items are H through T. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Okay, seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the 13 resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Beniziano for the second. All right, beginning with line item H, resolution number 22-R-01, is to appoint Rob Savo as the IPBC delegate representative and Joyce DeLeon as the alternate representative. Line item I, resolution number 22-R-02, is to appoint Rob Savo as the IMRF delegate representative and Joyce DeLeon as the alternate representative. Line item J, resolution number 22-R-03, is to appoint Rob Savo as the Irma delegate representative and Joyce DeLeon as the alternate. Line item K, resolution number 22-R-04, is to approve the National League of Cities Voting and Alternate Voting Delegates. Line item L, resolution number 22-R-05, is to appoint city representatives to the Northwest Municipal Conference. Line item M, resolution number 22-R-06, is to appoint a director and alternate director as the representatives to the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County, also known as SWINK. And line item N, resolution number 22-R-07, is to authorize an agreement between the city of Rolling Meadows and the Illinois Department of Transportation for maintenance and energy costs associated with traffic signals and shared intersections under the local jurisdiction. Line item O, resolution number 22-R-08, is to authorize an agreement between the city of Rolling Meadows and the Illinois Department of Transportation for maintenance and energy costs associated with traffic signals at shared intersections under the jurisdiction. Line item P, resolution number 22-R-09, is to approve fiscal year 2022 motor fuel tax appropriations for Public Works maintenance operations. And line item Q, resolution number 22-R-10, is to award a one-year extension contract for janitorial services for city facilities provided from February 1st, 2022 through January 31st, 2023. Line item R, resolution number 22-R-11, is to authorize the execution of a contract with the DACRA Tech LLC for the city's citation and education software solutions. Line item S, resolution number 22-R-12, is to authorize a contract for forestry maintenance services for fiscal year 2022. And finally, line item T, resolution number 22-R-13, is to authorize the city of Rolling Meadows' participation in the national multi-state opioid settlement and ratifying the execution of related settlement agreements. The question is, shall the 13 resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Soneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. That brings the council to other business and reports for this evening. I do not have any appointments to proceed with, nor do I have any proclamations. Is there anything for the city clerk to report?
No, not tonight.
Thank you. Then that'll bring us to city staff reports, and we will begin with the first item, which are the community items of interest, and for this, we will defer to city manager Savo. City manager Savo, the floor is yours when you are ready.
Thank you very much, Mayor. A few items to report this evening. The January newsletter can be found on the city website. Visit cityrm.org and visit the News and Views tab. Public Works is continuing to pick up Christmas trees. Any resident who is looking to dispose of a Christmas tree may do so through January 14th. Lights and decorations should be removed from the trees, and the trees should be placed to the curb with the cut side facing the street. The city's holiday lights recycling program is taking place through February 4th. We all know this is the time of year. We all take our holiday lights off in the cold, freezing winter, so those of you who have lights that are no longer functioning, rather than throwing them in the trash and sending them to the landfill, we recycle those through our partnership at SWINK. So feel free to drop those off at a bin outside of City Hall. The Rolling Meadows Police Department is continuing to accept donations for the new Hope Fund that will assist victims of disasters, domestic violence, child abuse, and other hardships that necessitate the need for financial assistance. The fund is now an 01(c)(3) tax-exempt organization. Donations to the Hope Fund can be made by visiting the GoFundMe page located at www.gofundme.com/f/rmpd-hope-fund. The city's 2022 events calendar is now available on the city's website and the Facebook page, as well as at City Hall. Very excited to be a part of those events and look forward to them. They're fun, family-friendly events. Be sure to reserve those dates, and all the residents are invited to join us for various concerts, parades, festivals, and other special events here in Rolling Meadows this year. Lastly, just one more item to note. City administrative offices will be closed on Monday, January 17th, in observance of the MLK Day holiday, and wishing everyone a meaningful holiday. And that's all there is to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, manager Savo, for that. We'll move on with the next item on the city staff reports, which is the December 2021 new businesses. And for this, we'll defer to our business advocate, Martha Corner. Martha?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to announce seven new businesses during the month of December, a variety of retail, office, and service uses. Of note is one business by a new...by a Rolling Meadows resident, Meadows Home Inspections. And also, we're glad to welcome Caravel Autism Health to Rolling Meadows. They're providing therapy to autistic children. For a list of these businesses and all of the 50 new businesses during 2021, visit the new business section of the city website at cityrm.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha, for sharing those updates and those seven businesses in the month of December. So bring us to the third item here, which is the January 18th Committee of the Whole draft agenda, and for this, we'll defer back to manager Savo.
Thank you, Mayor. The draft agenda includes the following items for the January 18th Committee of the Whole. First, we have the Personnel Rules and Regulations of the city of Rolling Meadows related to the city's pay plan. The second item on the agenda is a discussion of the building codes and local amendment updates. And the third item is the city...a discussion of the city's water shut-off policy. The agenda still is a draft and is included in the agenda packet for anyone to review. A final version will be posted on the city's website in advance of the meeting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act.
Perfect, thank you for that. Then that'll bring us to the fourth and final item on the city staff reports, and this is for the January 25th City Council draft agenda. Manager Savo?
Thank you. Included on the January 25th City Council agenda under the pending items includes an ordinance to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic on for second reading. A second reading of an ordinance amending pay ranges for seasonal and intern positions for the city of Rolling Meadows. A second reading of an ordinance designating representatives to the Northwest Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Agency for the city of Rolling Meadows. Under consent ordinances, item D is an ordinance approving an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Item E is an ordinance approving special use to allow an electronic message sign and other relief necessary to accommodate the electric sign at 2720 Kirchhoff Road. Item F is an ordinance amending the liquor code to add new license classifications for hotels. Item G is an ordinance amending the Personnel Rules and Regulations of the city of Rolling Meadows related to the city's pay plan. Under new business, we will have the motion to approve payments on bills related to the warrant list for January 25th. Under consent resolutions, item G is a resolution to approve local public agency agreement for federal participation with the I dot for the proposed Hicks Road Bike Path, and that's for Phase 2 engineering. Additionally related is a resolution to award a contract for Phase 2 engineering services for the Hicks Road Bike Path. Item I is a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2022 rebuild Illinois appropriations for Public Works maintenance operations. And item J is a resolution to award a contract for preliminary engineering services for the Kennedy Pond Survey. Lastly, under other business and reports, we're going to be celebrating a magnificent milestone as Ellis Fitzgerald turns 100 years old, and so that includes all of the items on the January 25th agenda.
Thank you for sharing those updates and look forward to January 25th agenda. This will now bring us to matters not on the agenda. Are there any matters not on this evening's agenda? Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I believe my fellow council members received a couple emails, but I did receive quite a few from local residents regarding the January 3rd mandate that was put out by Cook County Department of Public Health in regards to the vaccine mandate. I know that it is a very hot topic in our community, but I did want to address it this evening. I did have some local businesses reach out, including... I did have some local businesses reach out, including, you know, what are our parameters in our community, and are these going to be enforced? And so I believe this is a discussion that our council does need to discuss.
Okay, thank you for sharing that.
Any discussion?
None matters not on the agenda. At this time, through conversations with city staff and with members of the council, it is our position that if Cook County wants to enforce these policies, then we will leave it up to Cook County to enforce. We will not tie up staff resources, and we will not enforce mandates that have the potential to cripple already hurting establishments, given the current economic time. And so if there's anything further to discuss beyond that, then we can always arrange for there to be a public forum, but at this time, it is not going to be the city of Rolling Meadows' position that we will enforce this, but if Cook County wants to enforce these measures, that's on them and their resources.
Thank you.
Any other matters not on this agenda? Okay, seeing no further matters on this agenda, then I would like to entertain a motion here to go into closed session under Section 2C2 of the Open Meetings Act regarding union negotiations under Section 2C11 of the Open Meeting Act based upon the finding that litigation against the city on certain matters is probable or imminent, and under Section 2C1 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act regarding personnel. Do I have that motion? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Reyes and Soneika, as a tie. Is there any discussion about entering into closed session? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneika.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session, and with that, I wish you all a wonderful evening.